Good evening and all, I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council for March 20th, 2018. If you would, please join me for a brief invocation. Lord, we thank you for this time together. We thank you that we can come and consider the works for the town of Apex. We pray for wisdom, pray for your guidance. We pray for safety and good health for those who are fighting for our freedom and those who keep us free, and those who have done so in the past. We pray for those who are missing loved ones, and we pray that they will be comforted. We thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our fellow men and women and children in Apex, and we pray that we will not squander that, but that we will cherish that moment. We thank you, and we pray all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We're glad everyone is here tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone. For many of you, this may be your first town council meeting in Apex, and so we hope that you have a good experience tonight. One of the things that you can do to enhance your experience is pick up an agenda. If you didn't do so, feel free to go do that now. They're outside on the podium, and it looks like this. Also, if you intend to speak tonight in either the public forum time or one of the public hearings, there are times for those, and there are yellow sheets there that you need to sign in order to do so, so that we call your name and you can come up and speak. In addition, in the meantime, between now and the time that you do speak, make sure you're familiar with the guidelines that you may see on the yellow sheet, also out on the podium. If you signed up and you didn't get one of these, I encourage you to go get one now, feel free, and we will get started. Not having any presentations tonight, we move straight into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are things that are considered to be non-controversial, and we typically enact them with a single motion. If a council member wishes to pull one of these items and discuss them a little bit later tonight as part of the formal agenda, they certainly can do so. At this time, I'll ask the town manager if he knows of any staff-directed changes in the consent agenda.
No, sir.
All right. With that, I'll ask council if there's anything that needs to be approved or if there is a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the motion passes. Consent agenda is passed. We now move to the setting of the regular meeting agenda. At this time, we will look at the agenda that has been prepared for us by staff. I'll ask again if the town manager or the town attorney know of anything that we need to add to the prepared agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, I'll ask council if there's a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the agenda is set for the night. We now move into public forum. Public forum is a time where we listen to you. We give you three minutes per person, and that's in order to make sure that you have time to make your point succinctly, and we can give everyone an opportunity to speak who needs an opportunity to speak. The town clerk will be bringing to me the signup sheets, and we will enter into the time of public forum. If you know that you have signed up for the public forum speaking, please be prepared so that when I call your name, we can proceed pretty efficiently. Coming up first is Doris Gross, and she has marked that she is a speaker for at least four people from the same group, and she has indicated Regency at White Oak Creek. So let me see, a show of hands, who she is speaking for. If Doris Gross is speaking for you, raise your hand.
That's what you're for.
All right, very good. Ms. Gross, you have nine minutes. Feel free to come up here, and just before we start, two things I'd like to remind. One is we have a little green, yellow, red light system, so just keep your eye on that. The town clerk will start that when you start.
Okay.
The second reminder is, please, for the sake of record, tell us your name and your address, and then feel free.
Okay. It currently says three minutes, so I have nine minutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, the town clerk will start it with nine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, I am Doris Gross. My address is 2525 Beckwith Road in Apex, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of all of the residents, the concerned residents at Regency at White Oak Creek. Our community is part of the new residential development around the Green Level High School at Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road. As you know, that school currently houses all of the Apex High School students. We're here tonight to express our very strong objections to an Eagles project, it's called Eagles Project Number 12, for a 24-hour gas station, car wash, and a drive-through fast-food convenience store that's being proposed on a small triangle of property at the intersection of Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road. That property was rezoned in 2016 from rural residential to B1 CZ neighborhood business conditional zoning. The business that's being proposed would include a 12-pump gas station, a two-drive-through bay, car wash, and a drive-through fast-food convenience store. As residents in the surrounding neighborhood and as parents and grandparents, we believe very passionately that this is the worst business that could possibly be located directly across from a beautiful new high school and surrounded on all three other sides by single-family homes. There are other commercial businesses that qualify in the zoning, the current zoning, that would be much more compatible with our residential area and with a new, large, public high school. We have a number of concerns. Number one, the safety of the children at that school. The convenience store will undoubtedly become a real hangout for the students. It's going to be a nightmare when those students start dashing across Roberts Road while they're distracted by their cell phones to get something to eat at that Eagles. What is now a very organized and safe traffic flow around the high school will become chaotic and hazardous. God forbid that one of us get a phone call that a child or a grandchild gets hit by a car while crossing Roberts Road. Number two, noise and light pollution. The increased traffic and the activities of that business will raise the noise level in the surrounding residential areas above the Apex noise ordinance, which I refer you to Sections 14-29 through 37. In addition, because it's being proposed as a 24-hour business, there's going to be all kinds of lights, bright lights, that are going to light up the sky all night long. Number three, environmental pollution. The gas fumes and the exhaust fumes from cars at that business will create unhealthy air in the nearby residential areas and at the school. It's going to be unhealthy. Number four, trash. Litter will accumulate along the streets around this business. Let's face it, people are going to be people. They're going to toss their trash out the windows. And as we understand it, Green Level Church Road is a state road and not a county road. Who's going to clean up this mess so that we don't have rodents and insect collecting and becoming another health hazard for the neighborhood? Number five, crime rates. Convenience stores and gas stations are crime magnets. They are notorious for attracting petty criminals and drug dealers. Even their own trade association, the National Association of Convenience Stores, reported in a recent article that FBI statistics indicate that the crime rate at convenience stores increased the most of any other business in 2016. In addition to a 24-hour business, in addition, this 24-hour business across from a high school is going to make susceptible teens very easy prey for drug dealers and other undesirables that'll hang out there. Why in the world would we want to attract crime to an area that is virtually crime-free right now? This is smack dab in the middle of a residential area with no other business around it. It's going to be an easy target. Number six, our neighborhood doesn't really need the services of this business. In the minutes of the council meeting where the rezoning was approved, there was a statement made that the neighborhood needed services. We're all here to tell you, we're not looking for these services. We already have three gas stations, soon to be four, and we have six grocery stores, soon to be seven, that are all within two or three miles of where this is being proposed. We don't feel underserved, believe me. We have plenty of opportunities to purchase gas, wash our cars, and buy fast food. In 2016, when the rezoning of this small tract of land was approved, the surrounding residential areas were in development, and they still are. And most of us didn't even live there yet because we hadn't closed on our homes. Therefore, we didn't get any notice about the rezoning. Only two neighbors attended the public hearing, and one of them was a property owner who was requesting the rezoning so he could sell his property to Eagles Enterprises. The residents in the neighborhood who had no financial motivation didn't have a voice in the rezoning, yet we're the ones that are going to be affected the most. We became aware of this project literally just two weeks ago, two weeks ago. We want the council to delay the consideration of this Eagles project to give us time to have a say in the type of businesses that would be compatible and appropriate for the neighborhood. A 24-hour gas station, car wash, convenience store is not compatible, and it's the worst possible choice. It will have a negative impact on the neighborhood and destroy the wonderful, peaceful, safe, healthy environment we all thought we were moving to when we moved to Apex to build our new homes. We ask the town council to delay consideration of this proposal until June 1st. We want you to meet with us so you can fully understand and consider our objections to the proposal. We're really just striving to achieve the Apex goal, the peak of good living. Will you, the council and mayor, please honor our request for a short delay before taking action on this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Speaking next is Salwaran Sukumarangharadee. And let me just make sure, it says you're speaking on behalf of four or more people from your group.
That's right.
Is that Crestmont?
Crestmont.
All right, can I see the hands of folks who are from Crestmont? All right, thank you. Okay, as before, please state your name and address, and then proceed. And he will have nine minutes as well. When you're ready.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Olive, thank you, council, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Salashon Sukumarang, 11383 Stonehouse Drive, Apex. I'm representing the community Crestmont and have residence here. And we have a, we are part of the residential community hard development right opposite to the Green Level High School, at Roberts Road and Green Level Church Road. As you know, the current school is Apex High School. We are here to express our strong objection to the Eagles Projects Number 12, the 24-hour gas station, the car wash, and the drive-through. It's being proposed on the small property in the intersection of Roberts Road and the Green Level Church Road. We have a signed petition from our neighborhood, almost 70 members I have here. This is a very young community, you know that, this is, a lot of people are moving to the Apex for good living. And this has become a big surprise for us because we just learned two weeks ago that there's a gas station coming up. The primary concern that we have is the safety of our students, kids, because our community is straight across to the school, and our kids is going to walk across every day in the near future when it opens for us. So I reiterate, the safety of students is our key concern. The convenience store will no doubt about for hangout of students as well. It will be a nightmare for students, sure, to start dashing around Roberts Road. The second concern we have is the noise pollution around our community. Right now, we are, our community members are living happier there with a light traffic, and the increased traffic is really a concern for us because it's going to be more when we have these commercials coming up, especially the gas stations. And we, I think my colleague, the neighbor community touched on a lot of points, which I concur, but I'll go straight to some of the other concerns to save us time here. In 2016, when the rezoning happened, we were not there, and we came to know later that it's a commercial happening there, but we never know there's a gas station with right opposite of the school. I can be making my way of this project just two weeks ago, so we want the council to delay its consideration of the Eagle Projects, to give us some time to say, I would say, on the type of the business will be compatible for our neighborhood nearby. And the 24-hour gas station, car wash, and the convenience store is not compatible, and it's the worst possible choice for our neighborhood. It will have a negative impact on the neighborhood and destroy a peaceful and safe environment that we all thought we are moving to Apex, and we choose Apex for our new homes. So we ask the town council to delay the consideration of the Eagle proposal until June 11th, June 1st, and we want you to meet us so that we can fully explain and understand the consideration or objection for this proposal. And we are striving to achieve the Apex goal, the peak of good living. Will you, mayor, town council, please honor our request for the short delay before taking any action on this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. [inaudible]. Lee Perser? Lee Perser?
Good evening. My name is Lee Perser. I'm at 210 Kings Castle in Apex. And I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight, and also for your service. I know it's not an easy job. My concern is with the length of time that it's taking to complete the road construction at the intersection of Highway 55 and Apex Peakway. I drive that road every day, and, you know, I'm not 100% sure, but that's been going on at least six months, if not longer. I think it's more like a year, and it shouldn't take that long. It does affect drivers and walkers, and I've personally witnessed, you know, dangerous situations at that intersection. So what I was here tonight to do was, you know, urge the council to see if they can help nudge that completion along. And I'm not sure if that's within your jurisdiction or not, and if it isn't, I'd like to just to have some feedback on who the right people are to talk to about that. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, and I'll follow up with you as soon as we finish public forum, Mr. Perser. All right, thank you. And I'll see, a few names got transferred to another sheet, so I'm going to skip down, and it looks like one last one. Venky Krishnan?
Yeah. All right. My name is Venky Krishnan. My residence is 379 Stonehouse Drive at Crestmont. Even though I represent a group, I want to say a few words on my personal behalf.
Okay, if you could just don't repeat something that's already been said, I'd appreciate that. New information would be great, though.
All right. I've been a great county resident for about 20 years now, and I have seen the Davis Drive grow from one car an hour to million cars an hour. So what we are trying to do here is try to manage growth. And in my previous residence at Town of Morrisville, we had a similar situation where the ATC, the American Tower Corporation, wanted to build a tower, cell phone tower, and we, and then we voiced our protest, and we were able to fend them off. And the Town of Morrisville had the courage and the willpower to stop that from happening, even though they followed all the rules and regulations. And I want to reiterate the same here. I want to make sure that it's not a question of if, it's a question of when, when the first kid is going to get hit, especially considering that intersection is right opposite the high school. I really would like to urge you to at least delay the decision to approve the gas station there in that intersection. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thanks a lot.
All right, having reached the end of the list, I will close the public forum at this time. I do want to make a couple of quick follow-up statements, if I may, and this isn't a conversation just to offer. First of all, I know Ms. Rayfield has done an admirable job of keeping people informed with some facts as that development rolled out. Secondly, I know that, having been on the planning committee, also on the planning board, and council member in my years past, this was an example of where we saw that residents typically don't enjoy living in a corner of an intersection of two state roads, and that by contrast, non-residential uses tend to be the ones that are most enjoyed. Now, with that said, I also know that the rezoning that happened was two years ago, and I know that our staff reviews each submission, so that if it is compatible with the rezoning conditions, then the owner of that property has a right to build within that zoning. And it is difficult, if not legally challengeable, for us to arbitrarily take that away from them. I think if I speak on behalf of all council generally, we appreciate the situation that you find yourselves in. I also know that we won't have any votes specifically on this matter because now the rezoning has already taken place, the submittals are being compared by staff, and there is permit by right for the owner of the property. And it is our staff's job to evaluate what is being presented to see if it meets those conditions for that zoning. If it does, they kind of have an obligation to move forward and approve that. Now, with that said, if, and I don't know the owner of the property, and I don't know the developer of the project, but if that person or people happen to be around or listening, I think it would be good for them to hear some of the concerns that you have to see if they can address them. But by and large, that use is a correct use. I also believe that high school students can cross a street safely when a pedestrian crossing is supplied, and I believe part of the project is supposed to supply that. So I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. If you do not have the fact sheet from planning department, certainly someone can provide that to you, either now or in an email later. So with that, I also want to say for, let's see, the, the Peakway and 55, Mr. Perser, just real quickly, and I'm not here to discuss it, but I do want to let you know that there was a problem with water mains found in the ground that caused the delay, and with that, the asphalt plants closed in the winter, so we weren't able to finish the asphalt repaving until they reopened back. That's just the way asphalt plants work. So that put us a little bit on a delay, but the town manager assures me that just as soon as they can move forward with everything, they will finish post haste. And I appreciate that, and I've heard that from other people as well. It was just one of those things where we got in the ground and we found something wrong, and we had two choices, covered up, pretend it exists, it didn't exist, or go ahead and fix it. So we decided the right thing to do was fix it. So I wanted to address that in case anybody else was concerned about that as well, certainly the town manager or Mr. Hughes, maybe, may be able to address some of that as an assistant town manager. Normally, I don't do monologues after public forum, but I thought a little bit was warranted here to help address your concerns. I know not everybody's going to be happy with what I said, I accept that, but I also know that part of our forward thinking and planning was very intentional to provide walking opportunities for high school students so that 100% of them didn't have to get in a vehicle and drive away, which leads to them driving quickly to eat somewhere in 18 minutes to get back in time for class. So this provides alternatives, also knowing that people will use those opportunities for shopping and other uses. Our planning department has excellent planning history, and we've seen enough evidence to show that in the long run, this will actually work out just well. So at that point now, I will move forward with the public hearings. We now move to public hearing number one. At this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Lofton to speak to public hearing number one. This is the Friendship Station PUD. If anybody wishes to leave now, it's fine, feel free. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We'll give them a minute.
Yeah, just by me now.
It was terrible. It's coming down the Cary Parkway. There's one.
Yeah. Probably older.
And could I ask somebody to check? Thank you, Mr. Roach, you read my mind. Before we start, please, so let me ask, the town manager just pointed out something I just want to ask about. So he seemed to think there might be a chance that someone who was here to talk about tattoo parlor, that they move their names to public hearing number four, but public hearing number four doesn't address tattoo parlor use. Is that correct?
Correct.
So before we move any further, let me just, I don't want to leave anybody with an opportunity to feel cheated out of an opportunity, but if you're here to speak about the tattoo parlor, know that public hearing number four does not address that. So can you identify yourself with, just to show a hands for a second, if you were intending to speak on tattoo? Okay, so let me do this, if it's all right with council. Let me, let me pull back this list, so, because the time to do that would be here in public forum. If, now we have one, two, three, four, did I, okay, five, Casey, just a second. So let me ask, do you all, I saw that was a lot of hands, and I don't have that kind of time for public forum, but can we have maybe a couple of people who wish to speak on the tattoo parlor? And, yeah, come on, come on forward. If you intend to, if you would like to speak after all of this on the tattoo denial, I think was the term that was used here, please come on forward so I know who intends to.
Only, only three of these are actual people that are affiliated, myself, Damian Flowers, and Aaron White, or Aaron Myers, excuse me.
Before you start, let me just find out, so I want to be clear, do you all intend to speak for three minutes on tattoo, on tattoo parlor denial? I'd prefer that we pick, pick a representative, if you're going to do that, or if maybe a couple of people could?
Some of these people are from charities, sir.
Um, so let me make sure I've got your name, um, and we'll, so let's do this, for those of you who intend to speak but not yet, just go ahead and have a seat on the second row there, and we'll have you come up when your turn is up. Um, please state your name and your address and, uh, feel free, and Ms., uh, town clerk will run a three-minute timer for you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
My name is Matthew Myers, I live at 1200 East Williams Street, Department H, on Apex Tattoo Factory. Uh, I'm here today, ladies and gentlemen, to ask you to make a motion to amend the denial of a bigger location for Apex Tattoo Factory, also to amend, amend the, uh, UDO on the business section 4.3.5A4 on tattoo parlors and piercing parlors. The original ordinance in which yourself, Mr. Olive, and, um, you, Mr. Jensen, were , uh, privy to voting on the day that it was classified adult use. The term adult use, I assume, was privy to the legal age of 18, in which the law, uh, says you must be to obtain tattoos in the state of North Carolina. However, the nature of piercings allows children, um, signed by legal guardian to entertain, receive services, uh, from our preference of seven and up. Uh, this makes our shop not just, uh, specifically adult use, but more family-friendly. The purpose of this visit is to show, uh, and the show of support is to first know how this ordinance came to be in the first place. In 2010, uh, 30 days after we did our official opening, an addition to an ordinance was made to fix the problem. And I say the word problem because originally, the ordinance was crafted toward illustrious forms of business that may arise in the future, and so one would say that adding us to the existing ordinance was a way of keeping us out of Apex. After the News Observer published our story, uh, Mayor Weatherly at the time showed up at our place of establishment and told us that we had nothing to worry about, that we were grandfather clause in and as long as we didn't shut down for more than 30 days, we would not be in violation of this, and as a new business, accepted the compromise. Since then, the goal has always been to offer the best form of permanent art, which can, uh, which is custom individually created works of art specific to one person. This is the first of the kind in the triangle. In 2013, we were contacted by Google congratulating us for achieving number one status for tattoo shops in the triangle and have maintained that status since. It is hard to go on, uh, it's not hard to go on Google, Yelp, Facebook, or any of the other ones, that out of two million-plus people in the triangle, they absolutely love us the most. We, however, aren't known for just great customs, customer service, my goal was to give back to the community, and since that time, have donated to many charities and individuals you see, uh, copied on the paper I've provided for you. The biggest reason, um, that we're here today is because we have teamed up with a group called Art for Scars, which, since I don't have much time left, just to keep it short and skinny, is something that helps women that have recovered from breast cancer to cover up their scars. Um, I only have one second, so, um, I have provided all of you with this full, full thing because I knew it was going to take more than three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Also, uh, David Lukfar, is that right?
Yes. Should I, let, you?
Mine says pretty much going to cover what he says, but I'm probably not going to do it either, so.
Name's David Lukfar, and the address 1001 Lexington Farm Road. I, I'm not going to repeat what he said about how the ordinance says that the tattoo parlor is 18 and up, and it has classified in the same as other businesses that are 18 and up, because he pretty much, uh, covered all that, but I'm kind of in the same situation that he is, as he took over an independent business and now he has gotten so successful with it, he needs more space. And, um, I mean, that's just the American dream. I don't see any reason why he shouldn't be able to expand and provide his services to more people who enjoy his services, especially seeing as how they're the best tattoo parlor in the triangle. And, um, they're a very professional tattoo parlor. I know a lot of people misjudge tattoo places, um, whether or not you have tattoos or you're into that kind of thing. They're not dirty places, they're not places to keep your kids away from, this is a very happy place, very friendly place, like you said, people of all ages come there. Um, and personally, I, I just think he deserves a chance to spread their services to more people and, um, continue to succeed in the way that they have and provide for more charities and just keep the ball rolling. And I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lukfar. Uh, Casey Carter?
Yes, sir. Casey Carter, 426 Cook Street. Um, I'm a resident there. My house opens up into the parking lot of Apex Wings and the tattoo parlor, so I've got front row seats, everything that goes on there. Um, five years living there, never had a complaint come directed for the res, um, workers, people, what's the word I'm looking for, the people who get tattoos at the tattoo parlor?
Customers, maybe.
Customers, patrons, that's the word.
Uh-huh, okay.
Um, they get a lot of business, and I think they should be allowed to move, but then, um, if I'm getting it right, it's still within that same shopping center, correct? So they should be able to move to any one of the buildings in there and, um, expand their business. Um, you will see, maybe on record, there are some noise complaints for that parking lot, they had nothing to do with the, uh, tattoo parlor, maybe somebody had too many drinks, something like that, from the bar, but, um, they're good people. I know Jack's, personally owner, and, um, I'd see no problem with them having a larger location in Apex. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Um, let's see, and Tony Luparolo?
Hey, you nailed it.
Awesome.
Hey, guys, my name is Tony Luparolo, I live at 301 Bergen Avenue in Apex. Um, so to not repeat what's been said, I, uh, I'm actually one of the beneficiaries of, uh, of their, um, just, really just abundance of support, both prayer support and financial support. I worked for Pioneer Bible Translators, based out of Dallas, Texas, for about three years, and, uh, they're some of my most faithful supporters. I have another ministry that I'm currently involved with, with, uh, which they also support me with. But, you know, as I was thinking about it, you know, and it's, and this is no, like, I know you guys are doing your job, you're doing great, and it's based on rules that are in existence, right? Um, and those rules are made based on, uh, the theories of what's best at the time. And I think things have changed, and I think that's kind of what they're getting at, and I just feel like if you, you know, if people take a closer look, right, and not just, um, make a judgment based on what, honestly, I used to have a stereotype about tattoos before I started getting them, um, I think you'd see a different side. Um, you know, I know there's other minute, I don't know who else is here, but I know there are other, uh, other charities that he's supported, including veterans, and, um, I just can't say enough about the families. So I won't repeat everything, I'll just say that I, I'm in agreement about the motion to take a closer look, um, simply so that they can expand, uh, they can grow their family, um, and then just continue doing good in the community. So, I'm not a professional speaker, so.
No, you do fine.
It's just from the heart. I just appreciate the chance, guys, and, uh, I just can't say nothing, great things about those guys. Um, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luparolo. Um, and, uh, Ms. Erin Myers, I didn't call your name since you had the same address and we typically have one per household representation, so, okay? Just wanted to let you, let you know that. So that was the end of the public forum list.
I put my name on the list as well.
What was your name?
Patriona Ham.
Oh, I think you put it on this one. All right, I'll go ahead and transfer it over, come on up.
My name is Patriona Ham, and I live at 600 Brickstone Drive. I've been here for, I think, 11 years now. I am the founder of Art from Scars, which Jack's referenced, where a charity that's going to provide grants to breast cancer survivors like myself to get tattoos to cover their mastectomy and reconstruction scars. It would be very nice for Jack's to have a larger place, simply because women who are getting tattoos on their breasts require a bit more privacy, so to have that space would be wonderful, and I hope you honor their request tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ham. Is there anybody I missed? Oh, Mr. Flowers, I presume?
I'll speak.
All right, that's the name I'm, I'll see here, okay, go ahead.
Hey, guys, I'm Damian Flowers, I live in Cary, but I'll address my address as well, 634 Pony Club Circle. I'm here to just, I'll just start. I'm Damian Flowers, and I've been with Apex Tattoo Factory, coming up on two years now. When I first approached Matthew Myers, I was starting out as a tattoo artist, but I've been an artist my whole life. Art is not only my passion, but it's my life. I needed a shop where I could complete my tattoo training, and Apex Tattoo Factory was a perfect fit for me. I'm an Army veteran of Operation Endure Freedom. I did serve six years in Army with the National Guard, and I spent 400 days in Camp Air John at Kuwait. My GI, my GI Bill cannot cover my apprenticeship, so Matthew gave me a free apprenticeship and spent countless hours training me and encouraging me as a tattoo artist. During this period, I was unemployed elsewhere, and Matt gave me a daily portion of his profit so that I could survive long enough to start making my own income. My skills have grown significantly within the two years I've been with Apex Tattoo. I'm well on my way to become a world-class portrait tattoo artist, something that makes many tattoo artists 20 years plus to accomplish. World-class artists travel upon invitation around the world to spread the name Apex Tattoo Factory, both verbally and in art. We aren't just co-existing, coworkers existing together as a job, but we are a family. We all work hard together to bring the triangle the best customer art, custom service, and experience that we can give. It's a shame that 10 people decided that we were anything other than hard-working businessmen and women, and I also formally ask you to amend the ordinance and adult use for tattoo shops, or at least tonight, amend the disapproval to change the location that cannot be found in grandfather stipulation that says we are sealed to our location. The spot that is still in the same plaza and further away from Apex Wings, thank you for your time, my dear.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flowers. All right, uh, this time I'll close the public forum. Uh, before we move away from that, let me just ask, so we've got a planning committee, um, do either of you have any desire to maybe consider this in your planning committee?
Yeah, we can put it on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, without objection, I think that's what we'd like to do, is let the planning committee, that basically what we'll need to do process-wise is let them review the ordinance in part of their planning committee, and they'll review that in conjunction with staff doing a little bit of research, doing our due diligence, and, uh, they'll do some research, have a meeting, talk about it a little bit, and they'll come back with a recommendation. Um, I, I imagine that, Mr. Myers, you'd make yourself available if someone wanted to ask you some questions about what your, what your business is and how it's going and those kind of things.
Absolutely. We encourage all of you guys to come by sometime and see that, you know, it's also an art gallery as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Myers. Uh, so without objection from the council, we'll send that to a planning committee? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate y'all sticking around. I hope that was okay to call an audible there.
Yeah, thanks for doing it.
Okay. Sure. All right, as, uh, as they make their way out, we'll bring Ms. Lofton in, take two for public hearing number one, and this is the Friendship Station PUD. Ms. Lofton?
So this is rezoning case 18CZ02. To orientate you to the site, um, Mackenzie Ridge subdivision is to the west, Parkside at Belacasa is to the east, and Apex Friendship High School is also to the east. Um, the 2030 lane use map classifies the property as high-density residential, office employment and commercial services, and medium-density residential. The proposed amendments to the PUD CZ zoning are consistent with those classifications. The properties were originally rezoned, um, to plain unit development conditional zoning on July 17th, 2017. Um, the collection of parcels are both single-family dwellings, agricultural land and forest land. Hume Olive Road runs through the northern section of the proposed rezoning, and Richardson Road is right here. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on December 18th, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. The applicant is proposing this PUD amendment to clarify the timing of the road improvements that were included in the original PUD as phase one and phase two. No changes to the actual road improvements are proposed with this rezoning. There are no proposed changes to the phasing plan or the utility plan, and the planning board heard this item on March 12th and unanimously recommended approval of the PUD amendment. And I'm also going to turn this presentation over to Russell to explain the transportation.
Good evening. Uh, I apologize for us having to bring this back, but, uh, one of the things I believe that happened during the, um, first process when it was originally approved was there was a misunderstanding between staff and the developers to when improvements were going to be timed. Um, they had a certain expectation, and we had a certain expectation. When their first, um, first subdivision plan, section seven, came forward, there were certain improvements that they expected to be done later in the residential development phase. I think what they're proposing is reasonable, but it's not what the UDO would typically dictate based on what was proposed, um, in the original approval. So that's why we're back. Um, nothing's changed, all the improvements are still there, but we're providing more logical phasing for the development.
Uh, can you, if you don't mind, Russell, can you clarify, it sounded like you were at a good pausing point there.
Yeah, that's great.
Can you clarify the, from your perspective, and I'll say from staff perspective, is was the miscommunication that it was in writing, but it wasn't clearly understood, or that it was verbally discussed and understood and it didn't make it to writing?
Um, the, there was a lot of, the phasing that was proposed, I think, was a little bit more complicated than we typically deal with. Um, there was additional language that was added to clarify when during residential development, these improvements would be made. Um, typically with residential development, um, a phase one would be when you have to complete improvements, it would be prior to first plat. Um, because their phasing is split up over a long period of time over the residential development, um, it doesn't make sense to do some of these improvements up front, like for instance, the off-site improvements at New Hill Road and, uh, New Hill Old Chapel, um, those improvements typically wouldn't be done until after you've built a fairly substantial number of units to warrant those improvements. If you did those up front, what they're proposing is section seven, it's a relatively small number of units to justify, um, that off-site improvement. Um, and as far as like Richardson Road at Hume Olive Road, those improvements would be phased later, um, when Richardson Road's actually extended. Uh, based on the build-out, it makes more sense to go ahead and do those, all those improvements together, um, rather than trying to do improvements up front and then come back and extend the south leg and come back with more improvements later.
All right. Um, do you have any, any other, uh, presentation? I'll let you keep going if you would like to.
Well, then we can, I mean, I don't know if there's much more to discuss, it's, it's all the same, uh, improvements. If anybody wants to see any details on those, we can certainly do that, but I don't, I don't have anything else I need to present.
All right. Uh, before we ask the applicant, uh, let me see if council has a question for staff.
What's the total number of houses on this? Could you re, refresh my memory, total? I know, I know this is just, uh, for a, the first phase is going to be for town homes, but the total number of houses, 600? I'll get that from the applicant, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess while we're looking for that, um, so this was, it sounds like, just to kind of clean up some of the phasing of the transportation improvements throughout the scope of this project.
Uh, yes, I think so. Like I, like I discussed, um, it was the amount of improvements that would have to be done up front for what they're proposing in a first subdivision plan is.
Don't want to make sense till later.
It just, yeah, it doesn't, it, it doesn't make, it's not typical for a, for a development of this type to do that much improvement up front with that, the way it's phased, that's right.
Nothing's changing from the non-residential perspective, but the residential, none of that's changed?
No.
So, since I've been on the council, I've kind of been very, um, I've noticed things like, uh, Kelly Road intersection with Beaver Creek where the light, maybe, the neighbors and maybe I think so, myself should have been in earlier than it was proposed to be in. I think we're trying to address that now, but, um, this is not delaying things, causing a similar situation in this neighborhood, right? I mean, that, that one isn't in this neighborhood, I'm just, I'm very sensitive to putting it later and then there'd be problems that crop up.
Yeah, the, well, if you bring up Kelly at Beaver Creek Commons Drive, I think we were a lot closer to a traffic signal warrant in that case, we already had a lot, a lot of traffic on that road, on Kelly Road. Um, we're they're proposing in a first subdivision plan is...
Don't want to make sense till later.
It just, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make, it's not typical for a development of this type to do that much improvement up front with that, the way it's phased. That's right.
Nothing's changing from the non-residential perspective, but the residential, none of that's changed?
No.
Okay.
So since I've been on the council, I've kind of been very, I've noticed things like Kelly Road intersection with Beaver Creek where the light, maybe, the neighbors and maybe I think so myself should have been in earlier than it was proposed to be in. I think we're trying to address that now, but this is not delaying things, causing a similar situation in this neighborhood, right? I mean, that one isn't in this neighborhood, but I'm just, I'm very sensitive to putting it later and then there'd be problems that crop up.
Yeah, the, well, if you bring up Kelly at Beaver Creek Commons Drive, I think we were a lot closer to a traffic signal warrant in that case. We already had a lot of traffic on that road, on Kelly Road. We're a lot further from a traffic signal requirement for this development.
Okay. Any other questions to staff?
It basically shifts costs down the line, doesn't it, for them, to help them out? So they don't have to put it up front. It's a big cost savings up front.
Yeah, I guess you could look at it that way. I mean, it's not, as far as the off-site improvements go, if we stick with the current PUD, they would have to go over and do the turn lane improvements with the very first plat, with, if that's a low number of units, that wouldn't be typical for that size of development. Typically, you'd want more units to support that. So I guess maybe the answer is their phasing is starting out rather small, so the expectation was they wouldn't have to do all those improvements for Phase One up front with the very first subdivision.
Yeah, which saves them a bunch of bucks up front. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Anything else for staff before we have the applicant come up? All right, thank you, Russell and Liz. At this time, I'll ask if representative from the applicant, it looks like Mr. Jones, come on up, and I might as well open the public hearing as well, and you can start us off. So officially, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Jones, please introduce yourself.
All right. Stuart Jones, Jones &amp; Knossen Engineering, here on behalf of the developers of Friendship Station. I want to thank Liz and Russell for working with us on these transportation amendments. Really, it came to the point of, we had the TIA with two bulk phases of road improvements, and it just didn't match with the eight phases of development that we had to go through as part of Friendship Station. And so it got to be a little bit confusing as we submitted Phase Seven, that we were talking to the staff and they had expectations, we had expectations, and it was hard to clarify everything. So we basically agreed with staff that it was better if we did a little bit more study. So we got the traffic engineer to come in, they did an analysis of each specific phase and timed the improvements with those. Now, staff did weigh in on that and put some limits on this in terms of density caps and things like that, that also tied into that. So again, this is a, just, it's the same road improvements, we're just timing them out so that they make sense with each phase as we go through the project. And again, I want to thank Russell for working with us on this. It really does make a lot more sense. It's going to be easier for us to follow, and it'll be easier for the staff to follow as we move forward. So again, the only change to the project is just the transportation conditions.
Mr. Jones, do you feel like your agreement with staff was a reasonable compromise? In other words, it was a middle ground?
Yes. The traffic engineer proposed certain caps based on phases, and I think staff just further defined, you know, because if we develop them in different phases, that might be confusing. So they put different caps in there in terms of numbers of units, and that, that's easier, I think, for the staff to follow, depending on what phase we develop at one, at what point in time.
All right, thank you. For the clerk, I think we can terminate his timer, but let me see if the council has any questions for our applicant here.
I can start. So for me, I remain concerned about this project, the timing, the impact, and I'm fresh back from a walk audit in that area, and we separated into two groups, and the group that I was in, yeah, so we almost got hit by a car. The car couldn't see us, and we had on all the vests and reflective gear, and we're adults, and I've been out of high school a long time, so, you know, so I'm really concerned about timing transportation improvements where we're pushing it back, when I got out there and had the experience of walking a mile, a little over a mile, in the, in kind of the shoes of the students who don't get buses. And I was also told this week that we may get less buses than we currently have. So I really remain concerned about adding more impact of students to the school and also to the road of kids who don't get buses. And so that's, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm concerned that NC DOT did not respond to the invitation to join us for the walk audit, so I'm not, I'm not sure whether NC DOT is going to be helping you with timing of these things if it seems, something seems to need to be sped up like Kelly Road. So those are my concerns.
Okay.
My main concerns.
All right. Well, we did, DOT did review the original TIA, and of course, every time we submit a phase, they look at the TIA and look at the improvements that are projected with that phase, and they review everything that's applicable at that point in time. This is an example of what we're doing. We're not really trying to delay anything, we're just trying to clarify when they would come in. So the only example I can give you that kind of points out is Section 7 that you'll see later tonight has only write-in, write-out access to Hume Olive Road. So we can't turn left onto Hume Olive Road and can't get to Richardson Road and Hume Olive Road. The only way they can do that is go back through McKenzie and get out to Richardson Road. So it added one car trip per day to that intersection, and for us to have to do a left-turn lane and all this stuff at Hume Olive and Richardson Road for that additional one car when there really wasn't much traffic anyway, it just didn't seem to make sense. We're not trying to get out of anything, we're not trying to delay anything, we're just trying to make the improvements match with the level of development that's going on.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, and I sent you a request.
Yes, sir.
For adding solar to these houses at a rate of .5 kilowatts per house average, which means that one out of every about 15 houses would probably have a system installed, and I really base that on, when I look at the, when I look at the legislative considerations, I base that on Item Number Five, which says the design minimizes environmental impact. This is really part of the design of a house is to possibly put in solar PV. The other aspect of this is with solar, there's a 30% tax credit still for solar from the federal government. If a person is buying a house and they decide they want to put solar in, they can immediately take extra dependence on their tax payment and get a lower tax rate or tax cost up front. So they basically get the money before they have to go through the first full cycle to help pay for the solar item. And by the time everything is said and done, the net cost to the homeowner for owning the house, including utilities, is less, is less than if solar was not installed. So what I'm looking for is to have the development better meet Item Number Five on the legislative considerations and to commit to adding basically one house out of 15 with a solar PV system. Other developers have already committed to that exact thing, so I'm not asking for any more than what others have committed to. And in fact, tonight, when we look at Gray's Landing, that developer is doing 14 houses, and one of those, he is committed to do a solar PV system. And done right and sold right, it can be a real enhancement for the community. So what I'm asking for is on the houses to consider Point Five, asking you to volunteer .5 kilowatts per house average, and then on the, the commercial buildings, where possible, on flat roofs, to commit to 20% of the roof area to be a solar PV system. Those are both low, low-end requests in comparison to what probably should be done to protect our environment and really to protect our nation, because we really need to go energy-independent as we can. So that's what I'm asking.
Well, again, we're here just to talk about transportation conditions, and that's really the only thing that was proposed, so I'm not fully prepared to talk about, you know, the whole subdivision review and approval cycle all over again. We went through all that last, last year. I've talked to the developer, and, you know, they're really not prepared at this time to, to commit to solar PV. They would be willing to consider adding the conduit for solar for single-family homes. That did not get in the conditions initially, but they are willing.
Are you committing to that?
Yes, we'll commit to that.
Well, I appreciate that you committed to that. I, I think that we need to go beyond that item, especially when we look at the small developers like this fellow that's putting in 14 houses. Another one is putting in 28 houses, committed to two. So it's the same thing as I'm asking for this large development, and it's far easier to do this on a large development scale than it is to do it on a small developer scale. So I, well, I very much appreciate what those other developers have done and have started as a future approach. And, no, this is, we did, we did hash this out before. We didn't hash this specific thing out before, but we did hash out the whole development.
Correct.
But still, we are in a rezoning. We are in a rezoning, and we still have to apply to this rezoning the legislative considerations. And that's what I'm looking right here, at Item Number Five, which is legislative consideration, design minimizes environment, environmental impacts.
Okay.
This is one way to do it.
Well, it's certainly something that we want to consider moving forward, but at this time, like I said, we're not prepared to, you know, we're prepared to talk about the transportation conditions, and that's really all we're talking about tonight. We're just not prepared at this point.
I'm surprised, because I gave you a chance to be prepared with my previous email.
Well, you know, the developers are developers and builders are builders, and it's hard to, on a project that doesn't have, 95% of the project doesn't have sewer, and we're years away from having sewer, we don't even have builders lined up. So it's hard to think that far ahead and commit that to builders that we don't even, we don't even have commitments from.
Frankly, I think that's kind of hallowed, and as you are committing to the whole project throughout the future, and projects include basically everything. They include sewer, they include water, and all the amenities, and this is just an opportunity, an opportunity to promote an item that makes the net cost, the net cost to the homeowner less over the lifetime of the project, of the home. And I think that's another commitment that should be done by the developers, instead of worrying about how many dollars they can collect on these things and how many bottles of fringe wine they can buy.
I think with that, I'd like to see if there are other council members that would like to weigh in with a question?
Yes, I have a comment in the question.
Okay.
The comment is, I think it was a missed opportunity in the initial approval of this development, not to have a more green-friendly home arrangement. But anyway, that's just a comment. My question is, so I'm going to go back to the Kelly Road Beaver Creek example where it seemed like there needed to be a light before it was approved in development, so that's maybe, because I'm new on the council, that has kind of scarred me now, and so I was wondering if we go forward with the, with the rezoning, but then we start having accidents and people start getting hit by cars. Let me back up. In the Kelly Road example, the town staff worked with the developer, and I thought, kind of out of the goodness of their heart, they didn't have to, they expedited the light, and hopefully that's going to go in soon. I really hope. But anyway, but I thought it was more of a gesture of goodwill from the developer that happened. I don't think anything was written down. So I was wondering if there can be some kind of, if there are problems that start cropping up, is there a commitment to the, work with the town staff to expedite the promised improvements?
Yeah, I believe the condition on the light at Hume Olive and Richardson speaks to that, that it's, it would be based on, you know, the volumes or, and it has to be agreed upon with DOT also, but there's no set time for that light, but it is in the improvements, you know, it's not really, it wouldn't be warranted today, but it does say in the conditions that when it is warranted, that we would install that light.
Maybe not just the light, but all the improvements, I think, is there a commitment that if the town staff deems there to be a problem, can we, would the expedition, expeditious installation of the improvements be part of what happens, instead of relying on the goodwill of the developer?
Yeah, absolutely, and so each, you know, one of the confusing things on this is that we have very little road frontage on Hume Olive, and yet a lot of the road improvements have to do with Hume Olive. So in theory, we could have gone in the back sections of the project and done work and not done any improvements on Hume Olive. So that's kind of the other side of this. But I think the way we've got the caps and the new conditions written is that each time a phase comes in, the staff will look at it, they'll look at the conditions of the roads, see what needs to be done, and then all that can be applied to the phases as they come in. So again, I think it's better for us, I think it's better for the staff, I think it's better for the town, the way we've got it written now. Before, it was just, they were all lumped together, and there was no set time for when any of that was going to happen.
Right, maybe I can ask a, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sure, and I'm going to ask this to Russell as our traffic engineer, Russell, I'm sure, tell me your opinion on what you think about the traffic improvements that we're talking about here, Kelly Road, Beaver Creek, right? I'm sure you would like to avoid all those emails, just like we have, on past decisions that I've made. So Russell, what do you think about the timing of this development and the traffic improvements?
What we've agreed to in the zoning conditions is based on the traffic analysis, so my opinion is it's consistent with the development plan. As far as the traffic signal goes for that location, Stuart's right, there's no particular time when that needs to go in. It's subject to a warrant study during Phase One, which is residential build-out. For intersections like Kelly Road and Beaver Creek Commons Drive, one of the things I wanted to clarify is, you know, that development had a, had an 80% build-out threshold for doing a warrant study. One of the things we found was there was a high volume of traffic out there already on Kelly Road, and people were complaining, but just because there's a high volume of traffic on a major thoroughfare doesn't mean that it warrants a traffic signal. Just because people are complaining doesn't mean that it warrants a traffic signal. So it's very difficult to tie down that kind of requirement to a development build-out plan. We have to have some flexibility in our language. Even today, if you looked at Kelly Road and Beaver Creek Commons Drive, it's still borderline for a true traffic signal warrant. It probably still doesn't meet a true four-hour warrant. It was borderline, we studied it before, but the town went ahead and studied it up front before any COs were issued to get it, to get the design moving earlier. And we'll, we'll do the same thing with this one. I mean, we'll work with the developer, and we start getting complaints, we can do an early warrant study and, and see how close it is and maybe get the design kick-started. But, you know, when you have these areas that are growing very quickly, just, just because you're getting complaints doesn't necessarily mean you're going to warrant something like that. And as far as the roadway improvements, what we've, the, the two, the two major roadway improvements, I mean, one would be what Stuart talked about is Richardson Road at Hume Olive Road. What we've done is said that those improvements would happen when the south leg of Richardson Road is constructed. Because right now, it's a T-intersection, and what they're proposing in their first subdivision phase doesn't have a left turn lane on Hume Olive Road, it's accessing through McKenzie. So based on the updated traffic analysis, looking at that sub-phasing that they're proposing, it's not really adding a traffic load to that intersection that would warrant improvements at this time, and it makes more sense to do all those at once when that fourth leg's extended. Now, you could do a warrant study for a traffic signal prior to that time, but it's probably not going to warrant. There may be a lot of traffic on, on Hume Olive, there may be people complaining, but it still may not warrant a traffic signal.
Right. Let me ask one more question. I know you guys have more questions. Hume Olive Road, and to your point, Ms. Dozier, is already in pretty rough shape with the foot traffic and everything that's going on. What is this development bringing to the improvements of Hume Olive Road at this intersection? Foot traffic, walkability, are they making any of those improvements?
There is a requirement for an extension of sidewalk, and maybe Stuart wants to speak to the sidewalk connection.
Yeah, we committed to extending the sidewalk from Richardson and Hume Olive down to the high school. Part of that, a lot of that is off-site, and that would come in when the Richardson Road improvements come in. As part of the Section 7 plan, we're running sidewalk all the way down Hume Olive and up Richardson Road, which is a little odd, because Richardson Road's going to have to move some, but we are extending sidewalk up along... but we are extending sidewalk up along there even though, you know, there's not a lot of road improvements, but we're still doing the sidewalk at this time.
So, this development should make it safer over there for all the pedestrians walking?
Should improve things, yes.
Are we taking into consideration that Apex Friendship Middle School is also opening in that same area? So, not only are we going to increase traffic a little bit, it's going to be a lot. And that traffic study obviously has not been completed because it's not open until the fall.
Right. So, the traffic analysis was all based on projections of the future schools, the middle school and the elementary school.
And you don't think that warrants a signal there?
Not at this time, but it will in the future, yes, ma'am. But not right now.
So, I will say that the two groups that separated, the group that was to cross Evans Road refused to cross Evans Road and we're adults again. So, if your project's going to bring in more homes, more people trying to access your commercial development, then some folks are going to be coming through Evans and how are those children supposed to cross Evans to go to school? And how, you know, so, I just have a real serious problem with this stepping this back some with warranted and permitted by NC DOT versus with advocacy through DOT with, you know, so I'm having a problem. I just can't support this. I just really can't. I cannot add something else where I'm going to possibly, I don't want to get any more calls about someone, a child getting hit. I just don't want to get any more of those calls. So, I just can't do it tonight.
Let me see if there are any more questions for Stuart.
This is a generic one, I guess, with the traffic. If, if, if staff decides that we need to move some of these improvements up from the schedule, is the developer, will the developer commit to do that at staff's recommendation?
Yes, yeah. We don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that's a commitment for tonight.
Yeah. We, you know, the issue at hand is that we don't want to do road improvements that are off-site and, you know, don't even involve this first phase right now when there's, you know, other things that need to be done, particularly sewer, off-site sewer. And we also are working with the town on trying to solve the Richardson Road extension issue over to Old Number 1. So, we've got other issues that we're working on, but yes, sir, we've worked with the staff on that.
Russell, can I ask you to clarify, is that enough clear language about the staff, if there's staff recommendations that in the future, then it will cause an improvement more rapidly as we would like to see? Is that, is it clear what we said tonight?
Yeah, what I understand is that during, I don't know if that condition needs to be written out tonight, if you think we need to get some language for that.
Yeah, we should write it out.
Okay.
Okay. And maybe, do you want to try and write something?
Okay.
But I think as council, we'd be happy to, to pause long enough for that to happen.
Okay. Yeah, my understanding is that during review of the, of the various subdivision plans and these sub-phases, that as we identify a problem that is related to a committed traffic improvement, that staff would have the ability to recommend acceleration of that improvement and that could be subject to council approval with subdivision plan, if that makes sense. They have to bring those subdivision plans back to council.
I, if you, thanks, Russell. I feel like we may have reached the end of questions for both staff and applicant. Without objection from the council, I'd like to ask for maybe a three-minute recess while we allow staff to work with the applicant to write the two conditions that I heard tonight. Councilman Jensen, if you want to help word the conduit condition. And I guess we'll let staff work with the developer on the language for the traffic improvements and if they have any questions, council members will be here. So, we'll give them three or four minutes, whatever it takes to get that written down. Does that sound okay? If you need longer to type it up, that'd be fine. What do you, Diane, let me...
Well, we wrote, we wrote up the solar one while y'all were talking.
Okay.
So, we can just confer with the applicant.
All right, if there's an objection from council, we'll recess for a few minutes. Okay. So, we'll stand recess for a few minutes while staff works on some language here.